Welcome to all of you here today. And we will call to order at this time the December 21st, 2015 meeting of the Salina City Commission. And if we can get a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. Okay, at this time, I would ask that all of you who are able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no awards or proclamations on today's agenda, so we will move into Citizens' Forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. And we just ask that you limit your comments, please, to five minutes, and that you speak clearly into the microphone and give us your name and address. So we're open for Citizens' Forum.
Norman, I'm in Salina, Kansas. Is all five of you city commissioners under a bond? Are you bonded in your position as elected official? And how about all the other directors of an office or something like that? We need to put you under a big bond, so when you do something wrong, comes out of your pocket. Just getting fired, you're not paying any penalty. So I would like to see every department head put under a, maybe a $50,000 bond or something like that. And the taxpayers do not pay for it. Pay for it out of your own pocket. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Kind of cold out today, isn't it?
It's winter.
Yeah. Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Last week, I brought up the issue about whether the public could challenge the consent agenda, and I never got a definitive answer from Mr. Cage or Mr. Binkston. And I did do a little bit of research on it, and I found out that the public can challenge the consent agenda. So I would request that don't take my word for it. Maybe have the city attorney look that issue up and give us an opinion on it next time. Thank you.
Well, we will take that under advisement. You said that you had done some research. I'll go ahead and look that up myself if you want to tell me where you found it.
Sure, I found one place in California that did it. Said right on their agenda, it said "public can challenge." I think I mentioned it to Mr. Hardy, too. He's aware of it. Do you recall that?
Not California.
No, I mentioned to it out in the hallway here. Yeah, that's right. Is that correct?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, just real quick on that. Obviously, that's a city a long way away from here that chose to allow that opportunity. It's a discretion that you have as a governing body. If you really want the city attorney to look to see what another city chose to do for themselves, we can certainly do that, but I'm wondering if you really want him to spend time on that.
Well, I had just asked that at least I could look that up, and I'll look that up if you want to give me any further information on that, and then I can pass that along as well if it rises to the level of beyond our discretion that we would think. So, anyway, no, that's, I'm just, that was for informational purposes only.
Well, you asked me a question, and you say, "Sit down. What's going on here?"
I didn't ask you a question, but I appreciate you bringing your concern in.
Norman Madigan, to follow up on that. It's been in the paper twice. The governor stated people should have more of a voice in their government. The issue that he brought up was the county commission race. So why shouldn't we have more of a voice say-so in it instead of five dictators? Or dictator, excuse me. Excuse me, look in a dictionary. The definition of a dictator is one person. A dictatorship is two or more persons. So we have a dictatorship up here.
Okay, well, thank you.
So let us people vote on issues. We have to pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other Citizen Forum participants at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the Citizens' Forum and move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on the 2015 budget amendments.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. As we approach year end, it's typical for us to look at our financial results and then attempt to amend the current year budget to accommodate any mid-year modifications that need to be addressed. This year, there are a couple. One is in the Tourism Convention Fund, and it's being amended to take advantage of some unanticipated revenue levels this year. Revenues from the tax were expected to be $1,420,000. They will be $1,858,992 dollars. We've received them all so far this year, so we know the precise amount. Fund derives its revenue from the 6.4 percent transient guest tax. Funds are distributed according to a formula. 3.4 cents is distributed to Visit Salina for various community promotion and marketing events. 2 cents is distributed to the Bicentennial Center to fund or supplement their operations. 1 cent is distributed to the Debt Service Fund to be applied to the bonds issued for the improvements. We did some years ago to Heritage Hall at the Bicentennial Center. I believe there were some restroom improvements and some other things that went along with the Heritage Hall improvements. The additional distributions to the Bicentennial Center and the bond and interest funds will reduce the demand for general taxes in those funds to supplement those operations. The distributions to Visit Salina are in keeping with the agreement with that entity. I believe normally, they have come back with, or will come back in the following year with an amended budget to provide specific uses for those funds. We would like to amend the Bicentennial Center Fund. Payments to the vendor will exceed the budgeted amount. I believe there was a report on that several weeks ago in terms of the agreements with global overrun was attributed, at least in part, to the disruption to business activities as a result of the construction. We also incur each year, or can incur each year, not necessarily, an incentive payment based on their performance the prior year. In 2015, that was $78,000. That, of course, came out of 2015's books for us, was really attributed to 2014 performance at the center. And then, of course, we had originally budgeted $480,000, which was their target level. They did have some, there was a range that they're supposed to stay within. It goes higher than $480,000. That was their bottom line target. The revised budget is $725,000, and that would accommodate all of those items. As I noted, the increased amount from the transient guest tax will, of course, help us cover that. Doesn't quite cover all of it, but it does cover a good portion of it. Special Parks Fund receives 1/3 of the liquor tax. Fund experienced additional revenues as well as quite a bit larger-than-expected carryover from 2014. And mid-year, we essentially made the decision to fund substantial, a substantial portion of the golf cart replacement from that fund. I believe we paid for half of it. And the result is that we now need to amend that budget to accommodate those issues. And then Special Alcohol Fund, again, that's the liquor tax, another 1/3 of the liquor tax. And by contract, we provide services through Central Kansas Foundation and St. Francis Academy. Those agreements provide that we pass through to them essentially the money we receive. And of course, the amendment would allow us to do that. At this point, I'd stand for any questions.
Okay, are there questions for staff?
Simple. The funds to St. Francis and Central Kansas, those are in the same percentages which they were allocated funds?
Yes, we would keep the same percentage allocation as exists in the contract, so we'll look at the extra money, and we'll calculate how much each one of them gets from that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Rod, if you'll hold on just a second. The, I pulled up the report on the Bicentennial Center that we had last time when we had the projected final target operating margin for 2015 for this year, and it shows 597,817. So it's about 598. And then you had the 78, which is the 14 allocation. It's about 676. I'm trying to figure out, there's about, what, $50,000 difference between that number and the adjustment. It's not really relevant in the sense that doesn't mean there's any more money spent, but I didn't know if there was something else in there that...
You know, the, and I've noticed that, too. And the issue is, I think, related to the fact that they look at their profit and loss from the standpoint of complying with the contract on an accrual basis, whereas we look at what we fund them with on a cash basis. I believe that is the difference in those numbers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as this is an open public hearing, we will take public comment at this time. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. I'll entertain a motion to approve and authorize the 2015 budget amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to authorize the 2015 budget amendments. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 5.2, public hearing and report on petition number 4376 requesting vacation of portions of three platted utility easements located on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Salina High School Central Subdivision in the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. Item 5.2A, first reading ordinance number 15-10817. 5.2B, declare compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day. And 5.2C, second reading ordinance number 15-10817.
Okay, we will open the public hearing on this and receive a staff report from Dean
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a public hearing to consider a petition filed by USD number 305 to vacate portions of three platted utility easements on the Central High School campus. And although the school was constructed in 1950 and properties acquired in the 1940s, there wasn't actually a boundary survey or plat of the campus until 2009. And as part of that plat that occurred, there were boundaries established, perimeter, public street right-ofways. Some unnecessary right-ofways were eliminated, and utility easements were dedicated for utility providers. And the specific requesters in this case were Westar and Kansas Gas. There are no city utilities that are located on the property. It's difficult to see, but this is the north half of the campus, and these areas highlighted in yellow are platted utility easements that are there for Kansas Gas and Westar. And in the course of submitting plans for the school bond project related to Central High, the designers determined that portions of three different additions encroached into public utility easements that had been dedicated on that 2009 plat. So they filed a petition requesting that those portions be vacated so they could be built upon. All the local utility providers were contacted, and the most affected party was Westar, and they had no objection. And we received no objections from any other of the utility providers. And so these are there for Westar's protection, and since they are not objecting to the vacation which is occurring in three different locations, there is no reason to retain those any longer because they don't serve a public purpose. Because this is part of their school bond project and a pending building permit, USD 305 is requesting that you consider an ordinance vacating those easements that are in the path of those additions on first and second reading on the same day. And if you're supportive of that request, a motion should be made to approve the vacation ordinance on first reading. Then a motion should be made to declare or find a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading on the same day, and then you would have a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? I only have one question that's in regard to, is timing then of the essence on this for the reading, for a second request?
It is their belief that it is because we have a pending permit which cannot be issued as long as these easements, or the easements are in place. And so that this is a, it's not the only item, but it is one item that's preventing a permit from being issued, and they're trying to get work done at the various campuses while school is not in sessions.
Okay. Great. Thank you. As this is an open public hearing, we will accept public comment at this time. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will close the public hearing and bring this item back to the Commission for Action.
I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 15-10817.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number 15-10817. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
I move that there is to declare a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second readings of the ordinance on the same day.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Making a declaration of a compelling public interest existing to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0 as well.
I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 15-10817.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and two seconds once again. For approving on second reading ordinance number 15-10817. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Okay, we will now move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 14th, 2015. And item 6.2, authorize an agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald to establish a business plan for automated collection and/or recycling in the amount of $35,000.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed or amended? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move into administration at this time.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 15-10815, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number 1 fees for 2016 in accordance with KSA 12-1791.
Okay, ordinance number 15-10815 was passed on first reading December 14th, 2015. Since that time, no comments have been received. At this time, if there's any public comment, we'll take that at this time. Name and address.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I have a couple of subjects to talk about here on the budget, you know, for Salina here for Business Improvement District.
Okay.
In Section 6 of this ordinance, it states that services outlined in the recommended program of services and according to the budget is recommended by the Business Advisory, Business Improvement District Advisory Board. In this particular case, it was approved by the SDI, which supposedly did the budget. And my question now becomes, when was this budget submitted to the city by the SDI? Maybe Mr. France can answer that.
Okay, do you have other questions as well as that?
Kind of hard for me to flow through these questions and expect an ambiguous answer that I can't respond to.
Okay, well, that's the way we do it, so...
Okay, well, I guess the question is, is...
Okay, when was it, when did the BID and SDI Board approve the budget?
No, when, you know, maybe ought to include something.
Okay.
Who asked the S Salina Downtown to submit the proposed budgets, which was the responsibility of the Business Improvement District? And what date was it submitted to the city? From information, well, I'll just go ahead here. From what I've, what I have, I contacted Mr. France. I asked him for this recommended program of services. He gave me a, it looked like a brochure from Salina Downtown. It didn't look like really a budget. And it was submitted, the primary date on the document is July 27, 2015. And of course, the one issue that I'd like to bring up is that state law says that it has to be submitted prior to May 15. Well, if that's the case here, we're out of time sequence, and perhaps the answer to this problem is, since it wasn't, statute wasn't followed, that basically means the budget doesn't exist. And therefore, I would request to dissolve the BID due to the improper filing of the budget prior to May 15. And then, of course, even in the budget, you know, we're increasing it 2 and 1/2 percent based on, we didn't even have a director over there for a year, but they seem to have included that in the budget. And if you would like to maybe look up some other information about this, I could maybe help you with that. It is based on an Attorney General opinion, and the Attorney General opinion number is 8977, written by Robert Stephan.
Okay, thank you. Up, did you have, did you have more?
Give me a second, and I'll just check. Okay, thank you.
You just about doubled your three minutes, so I'm being very generous to you today.
What does that got to do with public comment here on a hearing? The time limit is based on whether the public gets a chance to speak about the issues at hand. And because the mayor decides that I'm going to cut this off in the middle of something...
If you'd like to continue on your questions of that, but if you're going to continue down this line, you're going to be asked to sit down, so make it, I'm giving you extra time, make it worth it. Okay? So let's go, let's roll.
I guess I've given you plenty of information to ask to dissolve the, and one final question was, Mr. Gage said last time, said, what is, you know, ask him what the decision was about dissolving the BID. He made the comment, there was no discussion about that. Has there been any discussions, discussions since then?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Answer the question.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I liked the others' answer, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Judy, we'll get to some of those questions as soon as...
Judy Larson, 2801 Ray Avenue. I found it interesting that Mr. Ruska quoted an opinion from Bob Stephan. I haven't been active in Kansas in a decade or two, but it seems to me Bob Stephan hasn't been Attorney General for a while, so I'm not sure what, if any, effect his opinion has on current law and statutes and ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on, as far as the timing of the budget, I mean, is there any, Mr. France, did you have anything on that? Or Mr. Gage, anything on that?
No. Commissioners, I don't have those documents in front of me, so I, all I have is Mr. Ruska's word. So we would, if you wanted us to look at those, we'd have to go back, and what I do is go back and look at what was submitted, look at the time. I do believe there was something submitted, a budget prior to May. They resubmitted, but I'd have to check and verify that. Typically, SDI, BID, again, the, excuse me, the Board has, they take on a dual role, but they are taken on both formal entities, so we'd have to see what protocol they use to approve that. But what they would do typically is they'll provide a budget early in the year for budgeting purposes in accordance with state law to meet the May timeframe. And then if something should change, they'll give you a modified or amended budget at this point in time. So I just need to go back and verify the documents. I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if Mr. France has that in front of him either.
What is the date, what were the dates of the, when we're doing our budget study sessions and stuff? They seem to be quite well ahead of July 27.
Yeah, and you get submitted information with regards to their programming for the fall upcoming year as well as their budget needs at that time.
Right.
I would need to verify that they submitted an actual budget. I'm sure they probably did, but I'd have to go back and check that to verify that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if we could just verify the dates on that, that would be great. And then the only other question I had on here was in regard to the budgeting of the Director.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure what relevance, I'm not sure I understand the question on the Director issue.
Okay. All right, well, we'll maybe get some clarification on that and then get an answer if maybe on that.
Yeah, in essence, what they've done is they have a Director vacancy at this point in time, and so they ask more of their administrative assistant to take on certain roles until such time as they can complete a process and hire a Director. So not, I don't know what the question had to do with, really, because it's not the Director that does all the, the Directors, just like here, our staff do things to help put in front of you the actions you need to take.
Right.
So it's really about what the Board did, not the Director.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
And just on a practical basis, I would assume the only reason for looking this information up would be to answer the question, if there's any consequence of not having a budget submitted on time. Is there any?
That's a good question. I have to refer to Greg.
I have a quick question, if I may, for Mr. Ruska.
Very quick.
The opinion you referred to, the opinion you referred to, did that address anything to do with the submission of the budget?
Well, I thought it talked about two entities and conflicting weight of each.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if... Okay, I just wanted to make sure, if you had seen an opinion that specifically addressed something to do with submission of the budget for a BID, I had not seen...
It does say, I think it does say that in that opinion, about, has to be done prior to the 15, by May 15.
Oh, that was the duality of roles issue? I am familiar with that opinion.
Yes, it's the duality of roles opinion.
Okay, then yes, I am familiar with...
See, we've got a duality of role here between the SDI and city employees, or Salina employees.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
No, the duality of role situation there was...
What does that mean, Mr. Gage? Are you sure? Are you sure about anything you say?
You're opining on a legal item. You don't have a legal degree or legal experience.
Well, are you going to answer the question to explain it to them?
I will answer your question. I won't tonight, because I have to do some work, because you brought out stuff, and you didn't bring any documents or references. And once we get that, I'll be happy to answer your question.
I'll give you the...
But you're, you're asking questions, and then you're throwing out all these, these things have to happen, and you're absolutely incorrect.
Here, I'm...
Well, sometimes what goes around comes around.
Yeah, well, Mr. Ruska, you've, we've clarified what that opinion addresses, and I just wanted to be sure that it didn't specifically address the significance of if there was a submission after the statutory deadline. The reason I ask that question, there is also assistance from the Attorney General, I believe by analogy in this case, and that has to do with the deadline for submission by governing entities, this body included, of its mill levy on an annual basis. And I believe the statutory date, I'm looking to Mr. France, is like August 26th or...
August, August 25th.
25th. We do have assistance from the Attorney General that has indicated that that, while that date is the stated date, it is not fatal, for lack of a better term, if that date is not met. A later certification to the county clerk of, whether it be this body, or the county, or any other body with property tax authority. You don't want to miss that deadline, but it is not fatal if it is, if it is not met. There would still be the levy of a property tax, even if that date were missed. By analogy, it's my understanding that, and I don't know, I don't know when those various submissions were made, but I do understand that the circumstances allowed the consideration and discussion of that proposal in the context of the city's budget discussions. Am I correct in that? I would understand from that, that the purpose of the deadline is just that, and that having occurred, you know, I'd be happy to look back at that Attorney General's opinion that, that gave that guidance with regard to the mill levy, but I would expect by analogy that it is not fatal, particularly when the purpose of the deadline has been fulfilled.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Benjamin, I would ask that you look at...
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Ruska, Mr. Ruska.
He brought the subject up, I'm responding to him.
Sir, sir, please, would you please take your seat? The answer, that question was asked, I think the answer was a very long and detailed answer...
He just said he didn't have all the information. I was going to give him a bit of information.
I would like you to sit down, please. And I would just say this, is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Just wanted to make a minor note, the Section 6 that we were looking at, there's a letter T that's missing from the word budget.
Maybe it's the French version.
Second line.
Budget.
We need to budge from this item.
I'm sorry, where was this?
Section 6, the second line, end of the second line.
Okay. Okay.
This is Mayor move approval on second reading ordinance number 15-10815, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number One service fees for 2016 in accordance with KSA 12-1791.
Second.
As amended.
Oh, as amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to second to approve on second reading ordinance number 15-10815, as amended, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number One service fees for 2016 in accordance with KSA 12-1791. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Get a roll call then.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. And just before we move into the next item, I just want to, I just want to make a comment here, and that is that while we appreciate public comment and input coming in on these, I think the last discussion just illustrates that we take allegations of wrongdoing very seriously up here, and if we receive those, we will ask staff to look into it. Now, I'm, I don't have a huge appetite for sending staff on a wild goose chase, searching down Attorney General opinions that have nothing to do with what we're talking about here. So, sir, you may have plenty of time to waste on your own time, playing attorney and doing all these things and trying to find all this information, but when, when we get allegations of wrongdoing from the citizens, it's our obligation and duty to have staff look into it. So I don't think there's a huge appetite for a lot of wasted time and taxpayer dollars having staff look up Attorney General opinions and other allegations of wrongdoing when none exists. So please, if you are going to come and have allegations, please be factual and have the information correct so that we don't spend a lot of time chasing down bad information. So just wanted to add that, and with that, we'll move on to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, resolution number 15-7309, establishing water and wastewater rates in the comprehensive fee schedule of the City of Salina.
Okay, Mr. France, again, busy day.
We have completed the annual review of our water and wastewater utility rates necessary to provide for operating costs, debt service coverage, and minor and major capital investment, infrastructure maintenance for our water and wastewater utilities. Review considered factors such as anticipated volumes, projected operating costs, capital needs, necessity for adequate reserves, and debt service needs for the five-year period from 2016 through 2020. It addresses the desirability of avoiding rate shock, either the result of artificially holding rates down or of large future capital projects. Projections rely on a number of assumptions to determine the rates necessary. Some of those assumptions include operating costs. We projected salary, supplies, and services to increase 3% per year through the period. We projected benefit increases at 5% because that has been our recent experience. Vehicles, equipment, building repairs are projected to grow from 460,000 to 570,000 during the period. That's the vehicles and equipment replacement program. Two million dollar per year allowance is made for system enhancements, and that is, again, is consistent with what we have invested in that program over the past several years. Waterline replacement is projected at $4 million per year, with the exception of 2016, it's reduced at 2 million, with basically one, 2 million each year coming from cash resources and the remaining two coming from revenue bond proceeds. Transfers to the Capital Reserve Fund are also scheduled at $2 million per year. Projects rely on the Capital Reserve Fund for partial funding include South Well Field design, South Well Field improvements, split over two years, wastewater treatment plant design, and there may be a few other minor projects that get incorporated there. Capital Reserve Fund is projected to have a balance, and this, the blue sheet says 6,500,000. I'm now going to amend that and say it's probably going to be closer to 5 billion because of some things that we've discovered since I worked this blue sheet with regard to the future costs of, among other things, the South Well Field project and so on. Current plan is to apply that residual balance to the wastewater plant improvements that we anticipate in 2021 or 22, which would, of course, reduce the number of bonds that we have to issue for that project. In determining the rates, we allocate about 18% to the customer charge. That's the basic rate that everybody pays, whether you use any water or not. That is, again, that's determined to retain consistency with the current rate structure and provide for some appropriate allocation among different customer classes. Have an attachment attached to the blue sheet that has a summary version of projected expenses, projected rates. It has some projected, it has, has the projected rates on it, I guess. We did look at typical residential billings under the proposal compared to 2015 with 2016 amounts. You can see that there, and the, essentially, for the different classes of uses, we see somewhere in the order of, for the total bill, somewhere between 2.4% and 2.7% increase. These rates provide sufficient resources for the fund and maintain the foundation for relative rate stability over the next five years. Future rate increases are projected to be in the range of 2% to 5% through the analysis period. However, that is subject to change each year as we go through this process in a kind of an iterative manner and finesse it each year. I would say that our intent is that these will be taking effect February 1st. Typically, we would do January 1, but we're, I wanted to hold off on this until we did the Capital Improvements Program review, which we, we just finished up, because that has a, has an impact on how the, the rates are projected. So February 1st is the intended implementation date. I just noted a few minutes ago, the resolution says that it's affecting when published, so we need to have that changed to February 1st, if, if you can do that. I think at that point, I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff?
The, one line in the blue sheet that talks about future benefit increases are projected at 5% per year, that's, what does that include?
That's basically health insurance, well, any of the city benefits, social security, our share of the retirement system, and that, again, is based on our recent experience with those, those expense classes. They, they just run a little bit higher than the rest of our expenses have.
That's quite a bit above the rate of inflation, and a 5% rate translates to that number doubling every 14 years.
Okay.
Which, to me, sounds scary, and I don't know if there's any way to deal with it.
You know, I just know that our costs have increased in that area, and I know that some of those areas do run above the rate of inflation.
Commissioners, to add to that, I mean, the assumptions in the rate are very, very, cover a lot of bases. They cover, for example, the need to have sufficient balances to withstand, you know, bad years, that type of thing. They cover operational cost expectations, but one of the bigger things that they cover is what we just talked about in study session, which is a very aggressive capital improvement plan, which gives you really up to $4 million a year of replacement of aging water mains that hadn't been replaced prior to that, so that we can keep up with the capacity, water quality issues, and fire protection issues. They, it also provides with the ability to have in the reserve fund dollars that can be used to, in essence, if we have a development opportunity, to complement that development opportunity, dollars that are saved for other major capital improvement items, such as the, the future South Well Field, and, and also on the wastewater side, we talked about a review of what could still be a potential project that could exceed 20 to 25 million dollars, but we want to review it, see if it would or it wouldn't, and what, what year it would. So part of all that goes into some of those major, major, large capital improvement items that result in debt service to be issued, and that comes down to how much revenue you have each year. So there's a lot of assumptions, but those are really the biggest assumptions that probably drive that. Historically, and I think Rod could, could probably give you more information on this, historically, we project with all those assumptions in mind, then as we get closer to the particular year in which a rate may be applied, we always look at that more closely, and many times, we find that we are able to actually apply a rate that's less than the rate that was, that was estimated. But it, I can't, no one can guarantee that, it just varies from year to year, and, but if you're going to accomplish those things that we talked about, you're going to need to have the revenues to do that, and that's really the biggest part that drives it, drives that difference between maybe a two and a half or 3% and a four or 5%.
Question. With, Mr. France, at any point, but during these next, I guess this would be six, seven year projections, does the Capital Reserve Fund ever get close as a minimum to any single large unexpected expenditure we've had in the last 10 years? I don't know what it would be for, I mean, if something bad breaks.
The Capital Reserve Fund, I think, reaches its lowest point at the close of the, of 2020, which, as I said, will be about $5 million. It may dip below that briefly as we get into the South Well Field area, but like I say, we're constantly replenishing that. Now, the possibility exists after 2020, as we get into the debt service schedules, and we're talking a long time in the future now, based on the South Well Field and the wastewater treatment plant, we may in fact have to scale back either that transfer into Capital Reserve to help cover the debt service, or some other item within, within the fund, maybe some of the annual capital stuff or whatever, but we can do that.
You've never had a single unexpected expenditure, that high?
Not, not, not to that extent, not something that we had to do immediately. And we always, if we have the, that critical need, we always have the capacity for, you know, a bond issue to cover those sorts of, you know, catastrophic expenses. I suppose if, you know, a storm came through and flattened the water plant or something like that, we would, that would be a serious deal, you know? I'm not sure if it's subject to being flattened, it looks pretty sturdy to me, but, you know, you know, so it's, it would be a long shot for something like that to happen.
Right. Thank you.
Well, we currently, reserves are about double of what the target is, is that correct?
In the water, wastewater fund, yes.
About 12 months now, and the target's six, and you're going to draw down over the...
Yeah, we're, over this period, we will reduce that through some of the investment in facilities and so on.
Right.
Well, I do agree that with Commissioner Hardy, that's, it's quite a hike, but we, we do have a lot of water delivery systems that are taking a lot of money, so, in the capital improvement project. Got to come from somewhere, I guess.
Commissioners, one of the things, too, is, again, in probably the last, I would say probably seven years, we have made it, made a conscious effort to be more aggressive with your capital improvement program, to make sure that your whole water and wastewater system doesn't get behind. If you watch the news, you'll, you'll notice oftentimes there are articles about the aging Wichita systems, and, and they have some pretty significant issues because of the aging systems, and then the response of that is, at some point, as a community, you have to make those systems better, and when you're really far behind, you know, we mentioned we didn't want to get too far behind, but when you're really far behind, what happens is, is that you have to then take extraordinary steps to increase your rates, you know, 10, 15, maybe even 20%. And we have seen communities do that, not, I'm not speaking specifically to Wichita there, but generally, we've seen communities do that, and then you do get a rate shock. So when you look at how aggressive your capital improvement plan is, that 5% is really not, it's pretty conservative. If you took out the capital improvement aspect of it, you could, you'd bring that down pretty fast. So it is really about trying to be consistent and predictable in what those are, and hoping that when we get there, we don't have to quite go as much, but, but we're... that when we get there, we don't have to quite go as much, but, but we're predicting that so that there's no surprise at that time.
Well, and just looking at the reserves, it's nice to be able to draw from those to help supplement kind of the big ticket items that we're doing right now, so. Okay, any further questions? Okay, open up for public comment at this time. Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we would approve Resolution Number 157309, establishing water and wastewater rates in the comprehensive fee schedule of the City of Salina and amending the effective date to February 1st of 2016.
Just as a point of clarification, I think that amendment affects the column heading year 2016 as well as the effective date in Section 2.
Okay, and is that in the, is that's all contained in the amendment amended? Okay. Okay. Did I get, did I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 15-7309, amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide for water and wastewater rates. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, first reading ordinance number 15-10816, amending Chapter 14, Article 4 pertaining to alarm systems designed to summon a fire department response to a commercial business within the City of Salina, Kansas.
Okay, great. We'll get a staff report from Chief Calvin Kelsey.
Mayor Bonner, Commissioner's Chief Kelsey from the Fire Department. We have a alarm ordinance in front of you, 1510816. This completes our alarm ordinance process to change some of the wording in the ordinance to allow the Fire Department to continue to hold on to some of the, to the enforcement portions of the ordinance. And basically, it's a changing of some verbiage in the ordinance from enforcement official to alarm administrator and keeping the enforcement official designated as the fire chief for the purpose of holding on to certain items that we can enforce here in the city. As you notice in the, in the blue sheet, that, that we have approved a third party to watch over our administrative portions of, of the alarm ordinance, and this is just simply a word change in the ordinance to hold on to those. With that, he asked that you look at approving this on the first reading, because we'd like to put this into effect by the first, if possible, and I guess with that, I'm open to questions.
Okay, questions? Okay, second reading next week then on this, okay. Okay, no questions?
Thank you.
Very good. And a public comment at this time? Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, move approval in first reading ordinance number 15-10816, amending Chapter 14, Article 4 pertaining to alarm systems designed to summon a fire department response to a commercial business with the City of Salina, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve on first reading ordinance number 15-10816, amending Chapter 14, Article 4 pertaining to alarm systems designated to summon a fire department response to a commercial business within the City of Salina, Kansas. Any further discussion at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move into development business at this time.
Item 8.1, application number Z15-2, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 to R1 on a 9.23 acre tract of land located on the east side of Prairie Lane north of Crawford Street. Item 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 15-10813.
Okay, thank you. This will be a staff report from Dean Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I already noticed a typographical error in the first line, which is this is Application Z15-12. It's not 2, because it's late enough in the year, we are up to Application Number 12. This is a request filed by TWI Development LLC, represented by Todd Welsh and the First Christian Church, requesting a change in zoning district classification from agricultural to single-family residential. And the property that we are discussing is, maybe you could zoom that up just a little bit, Dustin, but just, just to put this in perspective, in 2009, the City Commission annexed this property right here, which was owned by the First Christian Church, and annexed this property right here, but did not annex property east of Holmes Road. And at the time that was being considered, the Planning Commission and City Commission were looking at potential subdivision plats on this property here, this property here, and this property here, all in late 2008, early 2009. All of those applications were subsequently withdrawn by the applicants due to the softening of the economy, but the annexation did occur of this property, this property, and this property. And the purpose of that was to have a contiguous annexation of property south of Brookwood Lane over to Holmes Road to assist with planning and coordination of future street and utility extensions. And the situation that we have is that we have a sewer interceptor line that's running along this edge of the property here, and much of this property in this area needs to be served by that interceptor. And then we have property over here that needs to have this property crossed in order to get water extended from the west to the east to create a loop. So the idea behind those small parcels being annexed was to allow for better planning in this area. And the church did not have any plans to immediately develop their property and it came into the city zone agricultural in March of 2009. In 2012, there was a subdivision plat known as Pheasant Ridge Edition Number 2, which was approved directly to the north of Pheasant Ridge Number 1 that comprises Quail Hollow and Prairie Lane. And that 2012 subdivision is now approaching build-out. So TWI Development purchased the north 7.61 acres of this parcel with the First Christian Church retaining this piece right here. And so the application that is before you is to rezone this property from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential for the purpose of developing an additional subdivision for single-family homes on the north. This would be the north 7.61 acres. And so the development site extends from the existing north boundary of the church up to Brookwood Lane. So we're talking about this, this area right here. Again, the request is for R1 single-family dwellings and one of the considerations or factors in a zoning case is whether the property is suitable for development under the existing zoning. And the agricultural zoning would not allow for any residential development of the property, so the applicant believes that the current A1 zone, which is basically a holding zone, is inhibiting the development potential of this property. And as we, if you could go back to a bigger view, Dustin, as, as we look at this property, we have R1 single-family here, R1 single-family here, the church itself is zoned R1 single-family. So this would be a logical extension of that, of that zoning pattern as was anticipated when the very first phase was approved in 1991. The other factor that you're supposed to consider is whether the R1 zoning being requested would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. And as we just pointed out, this is all R1 single-family, and so the request is to extend that zoning pattern into this area. It is directly across the street from this subdivision that is close to fully developing. The applicant can clarify how many of those lots are left, but there were 27 lots originally and very few of those have not been either built on or sold. So we believe as a staff that making this R1 would be compatible with the zoning and uses of Pheasant Ridge Edition and Pheasant Ridge Number 2. As far as the public utilities and services, there is existing water lines in Brookwood Lane and also connecting down to Crawford Street that serve those existing areas. There was a pump station located on this lot right here that was removed and relocated up to this location, so that sanitary sewer pump station would be capable of serving both this development here and this development there, but that is as far as that could go. Any future development to the north or to the east would have to get back over to that interceptor. One of the things that was looked at and discussed was streets and traffic. And so what we have is, we have Brookwood being extended on, in terms of plating of right-of-way, eventually we'll reach over to Holmes Road. So Prairie Lane will connect there, there's a parallel street proposed here and eventually that will connect over to Holmes Road. So at present, there's one way in being Crawford Street, but eventually there will be multiple points of connection. And just for comparative purposes, in terms of the number of vehicles going out to Crawford Street, if this subdivision were approved, we calculated to be roughly 680 vehicle trips per day coming out of Prairie Lane onto Crawford. But if you compare that to farther west, at Fairdale Road carries 1,600 vehicles a day north of Crawford, and Sights carries over 2,500 vehicles a day north of Crawford. And Crawford Street itself, along this section, carries about 2,200 vehicles a day. As far as the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, that does show this as being suitable for future suburban residential development. And the proposed development here is about three units per acre, that's 23 lots on 7.61 acres, and that would be consistent with that designation. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on November 17, 2015, also considered a preliminary plat of the property. And at the conclusion of the hearing, they recommended approval of the applicant's request for R1 zoning. And they made four findings, which are on page five of your report there, and those findings are consistent with the findings made by the Planning Commission and City Commission in 2012 for approval of Pheasant Ridge Number 2 in this area. So if you were to concur with their recommendation, the attached ordinance before you should be approved on first reading. A second reading would not occur until a final plat of the property has been prepared and they would come back to you together, both a final plat and consideration of second reading. Your option would be to return this item to the Planning Commission with any reasons you have for disagreeing with their recommendation, or if you have four votes in support of such action, you could vote to deny the rezoning request, in which case you would need to make findings that would support denial of the request, since this is coming to you with the recommendation of approval. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the rezoning.
Okay, great. Any questions for staff in regard to the rezoning? Okay, see no questions about the rezoning, unless Commissioner Hardy is pondering a question.
How far does Brookwood go right now, to the east?
Well, you can see the pavement ends right here, just to the, this is Estates Drive, and it extends just to the east edge of what that's known as Woodland Hills Estates. That particular subdivision, it goes to that point and stops.
So what's the plan for extending Brookwood?
The plan for extending Brookwood would be primarily based on the timing and interest in development of Overland Ventures, which owns this property here. Overland Ventures is a company that has developed Heritage at Hawthorne, Reserves at Prairie Glen. They are the owners of this property, they are aware of the various plans that have been advanced in this area, including the East Salina Master Plan work that was done. But what we have is a situation where there is right-of-way dedicated for the south half of Brookwood by Presbyterian Manor, but the north half of Brookwood would need to be dedicated by this property owner here to get to this point. Overland Ventures owns from here all the way over to Holmes, so they would be in control of getting that half dedicated. And then, of course, on the Pheasant Ridge Number 2 plat, we have the south half dedicated and there's a proposal on this plat to dedicate that. Todd Welsh, Inc. owns this property here, so that would control, again, the south half of Brookwood. So it is relatively assured that Brookwood will eventually extend all the way to Holmes Road, but in terms of getting the right-of-way and the financial participation of this owner, that is dependent on Overland Ventures and their timing.
Is there no plan to immediately extend Brookwood east at this point?
We are...
To communicate with this development?
Without right-of-way being dedicated by this owner and without their, this property is presently not within the city limits, so that would have to be brought into the city and then they would have to be a party to whatever financing mechanism was developed for Brookwood. But in the case of this piece right here, half the cost of the portion that was built was assessed to Woodland Hills Estates and the other half was assessed to Presbyterian Manor. The expectation is that that would continue, but to do that, this property owner has to be a participant.
Thank you.
And we just, the timing on that is unknown.
For the purposes of school, then, would Brookwood be the preferred street for travel?
I believe that, that Brookwood is either designated, if is not, as a collector, at least as a minor collector, because it is one of the streets that goes all the way through to Fairdale and even all the way to Marymount. So because it certainly has lower traffic volumes and it would be a direct route, I think, in terms of safe routes to school, eventually that would be the preferred route instead of Crawford.
Is that master planned to go all the way out to, is that Holmes or where?
Holmes Road. This is Holmes Road right here.
Is that, I mean, is Brookwood master planned to go straight out to that?
It is, it is master planned to go there, but the, there are, there are some creativity in terms of alignments and things that are shown in the East Salina Master Plan that, again, will all come to fruition when it is our hope and it's actually desirable that this entire piece here is all owned by one property owner, so it will be better to plan that. But the, the master plan is that for Brookwood, we'll extend to Holmes Road. How it extends and the actual design and alignment will all be dictated through the But I think there's also a plan that farther to the north, Glen Avenue, will also extend to... out over to Holmes Road.
Yeah, this isn't, this apparently assumed that the church wouldn't sell that property, it looks like, because there isn't any reference to anything on this property.
Right. It was, it was not certain at the time that was developed as to what the church essentially bought all the property, all the way up to Brookwood. And then, as they discussed their plans over time, they decided that it was in their interest to retain a strip on the north side of the church. And the plan for that right now is to be a green space or private open space to kind of connect the church with the neighborhood, but there's, the church has no specific plans for that at this time. But they are included in the application, because having it zoned R1 would allow them options to do things on it in the future, and there is a lot set aside for the church.
This is not a question related to the zoning, but towards subdivision regulations, and sort of kind of piggybacks onto some of the questions the other commissioners here had. And that is, is there anything in the subdivision regulations that kind of would dictate, being that there is only one point of ingress and egress on this, that would dictate either length of, maximum length of cul-de-sac, or what would be determined to be a cul-de-sac, and/or, and/or, number of units, because it looks like it would approach, master planned anyway, 67 different residences on this, on this development, with only one point of ingress and egress.
I don't, I don't see Mr., that Mr. Williams is still here, but if you want to go to the slide layout of the plat, Dustin? There was a development review team meeting on this, and the agreement with the fire department was that these lots here could develop as shown. And then, the results of that is that, right now, we have 45 lots that are supported by one exit. And from the subdivision regulations' point of view, because we have a platted connection through there, it's just a matter of timing, and the same with this. So, what will occur is, if the developer wishes to go beyond these lots right here, he will have to construct an emergency access road over to Holmes Road, roughly in this alignment, or he could use the Brookwood alignment, but, so that there is a second means of ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, and that, that's the way that is being addressed. But from the standpoint of the subdivision regulations, this would be viewed not as a cul-de-sac or dead-end street, but as, it's just a phasing problem, where we're doing additional phases, but eventually, this will actually have this way, this way, and this way to get in, so there's actually three entrances into this area, from a planning standpoint.
Is the Brookwood alignment allowed to go west towards, towards the housing development that direction and along the Presbyterian Manor?
Yes. If you want to go back to the aerial, Dustin. Again, there's, there's right-of-way already dedicated for the south half of Brookwood Lane, and when this property up here is proposed for some form of development, they will need to dedicate the north half of that right-of-way for Brookwood Lane, and this will all line up.
Are we talking about something that could be decades in the making here?
I don't know. Well, if you look at it from the standpoint that this subdivision was platted in 1992, and we're now at 2015, and so, from 1992, this was all that was there, and then this was done in 2012, and this was done here. It is partially going to be market-driven when Overland Ventures deems that it's worth their, their time and investment to plan this out for development. But you are correct that, given what we call the pace of development and the phasing that has occurred to date, it is, we know it's going to happen eventually, but the exact timing on that would be uncertain.
So, we're going to have an unpaved road, possibly, between this development and Holmes Road?
It will not be an unpaved road. It will, I mean, it will essentially be something that is designed to support the weight of a fire truck, that would allow them a second way into the subdivision if needed. We have that today with the Grand Prairie Edition that is located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive. There is a fire access lane that goes from Markley Road across the municipal golf course over to Grand Prairie as a, as a second means in and out. We also have a fire access road that goes from the parking lot at Great Life Fitness into the River Run Edition. So, what we have tried to do, working with the fire department, is if we have only one way into a subdivision, that we work to have a second means of emergency vehicle egress, so that if there's, for any reason, a blockage at this location right here, that they have an alternate way in. So, it won't be open to general traffic, it will just be reserved for the fire department or EMS vehicles if they need to get in there.
Maybe I go west with that road?
Well, it's, we're, I said, Mr. Williams is not here, but that, that was his stated preference, but there, there could be, I don't, we'd have to compare the lengths, but there, there could be something said for either of those. But we haven't, we haven't got to that point yet, because that's something that would be pinned down on the final plat, but the mayor is correct that there's a cap on the number of homes that they can develop with only one way in. And the cap that's been established is, these six additional lots here would be Phase 1, and then no additional houses could be built until there's a second way in.
Okay. Any further questions for staff at this time? Okay. Well, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment, so anybody from the public and/or the applicant, if they choose to give us an idea of kind of what their thoughts are on this.
Mayor Blanchard, Commissioners, Todd Welsh, 221 South Morse Drive. Thank you for putting this on the agenda for a hearing. A couple of things, got to give credit, where always credit is due. Thank you to the city staff, Gary Hobbie, Dean Andrew, Martha, Wayne Nelson, and Dan Stack, for kind of helping us look at this whole area. We've been dealing with it for about 10 years, and it's had its own ups and downs, and we've kind of worked through that. You are correct, at the DRT meeting, honestly, when I purchased the land with owning the other to the side, I thought, well, gosh, this is a slam dunk. I finally have a piece of property with a road, water, utilities, electricity. What could they, what could you go wrong? Until we got to the fire marshal, and he was in the DRT meeting, and he just said, mm-mm. But it was basically his idea, and I appreciated him coming up with it, and I was okay with it at the time, was he was allowing us to, and that's how we came up with the phasing of it. It's very difficult on the plat map to show where it is, but the, not the cul-de-sac, but the next street over, running the same way, those first six lots, then we came up with an idea of phasing, because that is Prairie Lane, adjacent to the Workforce Housing Project. And those six lots, the, let's go back a little bit on there. When the Workforce Housing Project was done, we, I paid for half of about $46,000 of the church's half of the road. The other half of $46,000 was put into a city ag deferral. The other thing that's nice about this is that would alleviate and take off the ag deferral from the city if we were to allow to put just those six homes in. So, I went to a phasing process, going, okay, I'm not real, not sure how this is all going to work, but if I could do the six now, well, then Roger came back and said, you can do the six now, but if you'll put this fire lane in over to Holmes Road that will accommodate our heaviest truck, you could go ahead and do the whole project, which then leads into another thing later on. But at least there was this plan of this is how we could get that done. So, we believe, and we'll stick kind of the issue at hand, which is just the residential, going from ag to residential now, based on all of the properties to the west, that development has turned out phenomenal. We thought it would take four years to do the Workforce Housing Project. At this point, we only have three lots that are available to build on in two, little over two years. I think what we had planned on from, from the very beginning, that's turned out to be a great development. Also, I would like to tell you that with this development, as far as Todd Welsh, Inc., at this point, we are focusing on 140, and I know that some of you think this is high from there, to $220,000 homes of new construction, because we think that there's not been a niche hitting of that. There's many homes from 240 on up to 400, but we're focusing on the niche, and we think we've hit something there that can do that. Also, by attending the housing study, what they're finding out is, we have this shortage of $90,000 to $100,000 homes, and it was stated in there. What you'll find is that allowing, going up to the next step, where we're on these six homes there, we're planning on 185 to $200,000 homes. What we're hoping are the people who live in the $100,000 homes, the reason they're not moving is there's not that next step for them. So, we're hoping to create that new niche of new construction, 1,350 square feet, two-car garage, with a basement of somewhere around that 185 to 200, to allow those $100,000 homes to open up, so that people can take advantage of that. Without having those open up, we just feel like the people are going to stay in those $100,000 homes, and they'll never kind of take that next step. So, there's a whole lot of other things going on inside that whole area that you talked about. Not sure what Commissioner asked about it, but HMTB, is that the right acronym for who did the? HMTB, 10 years ago, when I got involved in this project, did this whole plan, which I'm sure you've seen a copy of the East Master Plan. I don't want to say I've challenged it, I've looked at it and just said, okay, well, it's fun to sit in Kansas City with highlighters and markers and not take any discretion of who owns the properties, because they ended up making roads through, veneer would own the front part of the lot, but the corner of the lot was owned by the guy at the tennis court, and the other guy, it just didn't, it just wasn't going to work. So, that whole plan needs to be really looked at, as far as how does that really all come together? But that's many years down the road. We would love to work, I've talked to Overland Ventures, they were at one time working on a plan that would extend, so that they could come into a benefit district to extend Brookwood down to our area. And again, they get off on other projects, and so, that one is out there, but it, I don't know how far that, that will be. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them.
Questions?
Nope. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all that information as well, appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other further public comment on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 1510813. It's Application Z-1512, filed by TWI Development and the First Christian Church, requesting a change of zoning district classification from A1 to R1 residential on a 9.23-acre tract of land located on the east side of Prairie Lane.
Second.
Second.
Did you get one of them?
I did.
She can have it.
Okay, I have a motion, motion of second to approve on first reading ordinance number 15-10813, Application Z-1512, filed by TWI Development LLC and the First Christian Church, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agriculture to R1, single-family residential on a 9.23-acre tract of land located on the east side of Prairie Lane, north of Crawford Street. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, that motion carries 5-0. I think we're, we don't have an executive session today. Boy, I tell you what, it's only 5:25.
My God.
Okay, is there any other business at this time?
For those of you who celebrate Christmas, have a very Merry Christmas.
Whatever you're celebrating, have a great time. Thank you once again to staff, and wish all of you and, and executive staff, and all of the city staff Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays, and Best of Us, and whatever it is that you, as Commissioner Davis said, whatever you, whatever you celebrate, celebrate it in good health. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries 5-0, we're adjourned.